Oh, Jonathan's here.
Okay.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the Emaus Borough Council Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the broad and fortunate stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll have personal appeals, Part One. If anyone has a personal appeal, approach the podium, sign in.
We have a public hearing.
They have the public hearing first.
I don't even...
Go to the other agenda. It just says council meeting.
Oh, okay. All right, so we have a public hearing tonight. All council members are in attendance, and Madam Mayor is here. It's on public hearing of the conditional use request at 006 South Mountain Cycle and Cafe, 316-318 Main Street, Emaus. Applicant is requesting to operate craft beverage restaurant in accordance with Section 306 Table of permitted uses and the requirement of Section 402 ZZ. Site is located in a B.C. zoning district. So at this point, I will turn it over to the solicitor, and he'll move us forward.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. We're gonna have a conditional use hearing tonight, and what we're gonna do is, we're gonna have the invite the applicant up, and the applicant will provide testimony. So this is an actual hearing, and the board will sit as a finder of fact, and will also decide, well, will decide the facts, and will decide the law, with the primary purpose of the hearing being to determine whether or not the applicant complies with the requirements of the zoning ordinance that relates to conditional uses. A conditional use is a use that is a permitted use once the conditions of the zoning ordinance are filled. So the applicant's purpose will be to come forward and explain to you, under oath, how the applicant's proposal complies with and meets the conditions of the zoning ordinance. I'll go through those conditions for you in just a moment. The public is invited to speak. People are invited to get up and to testify in favor of the application if they'd like, or to oppose the application if they'd like. Once the applicant shows that he or she or it meets the conditions of the ordinance, the burden then shifts to someone who might be an objector to explain why with specific, provide specific information, not opinion, not conjecture, not general information, but with specific information as to why this particular use would be contrary to the public health, safety, and general welfare of the community. I don't know whether there'll be anybody here tonight who wishes to speak for or against other than the applicant. Members of council will be able to question the applicant as well, and then ultimately there will be a vote to approve or to disapprove the conditional use. I will follow up then and prepare a written decision that will be executed by council at the next meeting. If I recall correctly, we have 45 days to issue the written decision from the date when the record closes. Going back for just a second, because I know that we do have council members who may or may not have had the opportunity to sit in a conditional use hearing. Tonight, we have an application for what is called a craft beverage restaurant. And a craft beverage restaurant in the B.C. district is a conditional use, and as a conditional use, it has to meet a number of specific requirements of the zoning ordinance and a number of general requirements of the zoning ordinance. The general requirements of the zoning ordinance are found at Section 27-118.3, Sub-D, and basically says that it must comply with other laws, ordinances of the borough, or other state or federal laws, and in this instance, obviously, one of the ones that'll be glaring will be it has to comply with the Pennsylvania Liquor Code. It has to, with respect to traffic, not result in or significantly add to a traffic hazard or significant net increase in traffic congestion. Has to meet safety requirements, that it will not create a significant public safety hazard, including fire, toxic or explosive hazards. It has to meet stormwater management requirements. Now, this is an existing building downtown, so some of these may not apply. Has to be consistent with the neighborhood. In other words, it will not negatively affect the desirable character of an existing residential neighborhood in a significant way. The site planning, it will involve adequate site design methods, including screening and setbacks needed to avoid significant negative impacts on adjacent uses. Again, we have an existing building. And then performance standards, that it will not be a serious threat of inability to comply with performance standards of the chapter stated in Part 5, which are oftentimes going to be environmental standards and things of that nature. Now, what they are asking to be classified as is a craft beverage restaurant. And a craft beverage restaurant is defined in our ordinance, it's Section 27-202. And it's a lengthy definition, and I'll try to summarize it with the important points. Basically, it is a restaurant, which may include what is commonly known as a tasting room, and it has to be owned, operated, and maintained by the owners of the craft beverage production facility. So in other words, the entity that makes the craft beverage that's gonna be sold in the tasting room has to own the production facility. So this is essentially is an outlet in a general form for the maker of a craft beverage to sell his or her product, that, again, he or she makes. And it may be in a facility which, in addition to food, sells or dispenses craft beverages manufactured by the craft beverage restaurant owner, or a craft beverage production facility in common ownership with the craft beverage restaurant owner. So maybe one corporate entity manufactures, another one runs the restaurant, but there is a similarity in the ownership of those. Such sales may include the sale of craft beverages for onsite and offsite consumption. So if people wanna take a six-pack, if it's beer, they wanna take a six-pack and leave, they wanna take a bottle of wine, they can do that, they can buy it there, and they can go. It's not necessary that the craft beverage be manufactured onsite. However, the product may be manufactured onsite and dispensed from storage tanks or other vessels directly to consumers, and I think we've all experienced those types of facilities before. And then to constitute a craft beverage restaurant, the total beverage alcohol volume sold shall be in a craft beverage product manufactured by the owners of the restaurant. A craft beverage restaurant shall meet all applicable licensing requirements of government agencies. So that's the definition of what a craft beverage restaurant is. Now, if we go to the table of permitted uses, which is Section 306, and the table's at the end of the zoning ordinance, craft beverage restaurant is a conditional use in the B.C. district, which is why we are here tonight. There are specific requirements for a craft beverage restaurant that are found at 27-402 AAA of the zoning ordinance. And basically, what these indicate is that, or actually, I think it's, let me take a look at that, if it's AAA, or if it's double Z, 402 dot, let me go to 402ZZ first. Craft beverage restaurant, as defined as a conditional use, meets all the requirements of a conditional use, which we just talked about. In the B.C. district, it is limited to a manufacturer of 30,000 gallons per year if the manufacturing facility's onsite. Obviously, if the manufacturing facility is offsite, we're not worried about that condition. It must then comply with the parking requirements for the district that it's in for a restaurant. Parking requirements for the B.C. district are essentially waived in our ordinance, and when we say parking requirements, we talk about onsite parking requirements, having a parking lot, or having some sort of other designated facility for your parking. And at Section 27-602.6, we have a parking exemption that basically says that in order, in the recognition of the need to encourage new construction, the reuse of building space, and recognizing the availability of on-street parking areas, we waive the specific requirements that something like a restaurant might otherwise have in the B.C. district. There are some exceptions as to when you have to have parking, they don't apply here. So essentially, as we go through the hearing, we understand that there will not be required any additional onsite parking for this use. Does anybody have any questions, just generally about the requirements of the ordinance, before we start the hearing?
Yeah, can you repeat all that for us?
Sure. You have another 10, looks like it took 10 minutes to do that.
I want to start back there.
Any other, any questions, anybody? Okay. So with that, what we'll do is, I'll ask the applicants to come forward, and you can watch us run it up to the table and have a seat, perhaps, unless you want, where would you like it, Mr. President? Would you like to come up to the...
The podium's fine.
Podium, okay. And if you, whoever's gonna testify, if you can please first state your name and your address for the record, and I'm gonna ask everybody who's gonna testify to raise their right hand at one time, and I'll swear you in. So, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Linda Rice.
Okay.
I'm one of the owners of Mountain View Vineyard, and our address is 2332 Walters Road in Stroudsburg, Pennsylvania.
Okay, Linda, thank you. And is anybody else gonna testify tonight?
I won't testify, but I'm just here to say that we're a family-owned business.
Well, hold on, that's, you're testifying. Give me your name first, please.
Randy Rice.
Okay, Randy. And sir, are you gonna, do you wanna be able to say anything?
I'm Chad Valliot. I'm the owner of South Mountain Cycle and Cafe, 316-318 Main Street here in Emaus.
All right, let's do this. Since any three of you, any one of you might wanna speak, why don't you raise your right hand, I'll swear you in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you will give in the case now in hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Why don't we do this? Why don't you go ahead, and one of you, and tell us what it is that you propose to do, and then what we'll do is, we'll turn it over to council to ask questions. We will open it up to the audience. If there's anyone here who wants to be heard, also ask questions.
Okay. What I brought with me here today is I have an already approved license for this location from the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, for us to be able to sell any of the products that we manufacture. We actually have three manufacturing licenses. We hold a license for wine production, beer production, and distilled spirits production. So what I have, though, is we applied first for the winery license, which allows us, as a manufacturer, to actually sell our wine, beer, or distilled spirits. So it's already approved, and I brought an extra copy if you'd like to have one.
Okay. Yes, we would like that for the record, please. Now, why don't you tell us a little bit, though, about what you propose to do with the property, and how you propose to use the property, and, you know, things like hours and...
I'll defer you.
Whoever wants to speak is fine, just...
So our proposed use would be to add the addition of the sales of the wine, the beer, and the spirits, and whatnot, and use our current, the current facility and the space to do this in.
Will you be enlarging the space, or making, well, I'm not worried about the inside, but are you doing anything outside to the space?
Not at this moment. We do have the approval from the state to, where was that, that measurement? The state did, yeah, the state did approve some seating outside.
Okay. The only reason why I ask you, Chad, is that the ordinance does require off-street parking if there's gonna be new construction of an aggregate total of more than 4,000 square feet of building floor. You're not doing that.
No, sir.
Okay.
Yep, no, sir. Okay.
It's just to put a couple of tables and chairs right up.
Okay, so you're gonna do outside seating.
Have a glass of wine or a glass of beer.
Okay. Is everything that you propose to sell in terms of the craft beverages, are they all gonna be made by the owner of the restaurant?
Yeah. You're legally the owner of the building, we are the owner of the manufacturing.
Okay. You're gonna be essentially be tenants in the building?
Yes.
Okay. But in terms of what you're going to sell, you're gonna sell your product, you're not gonna sell other people's product. It wasn't clear to me from the application.
Well, the state has, the state allows us, but what you want us to do, okay, that's all we need to know.
Right.
I mean, the state allows us to sell any Pennsylvania-made product, but if your zoning only allows ours, then we'll only sell ours.
The problem, Linda, is that when you start selling other people's product, you fall into the definition of tavern.
Right.
And if we go way back to when the borough first passed this ordinance, the borough wanted to facilitate people like you selling your product without turning it into a tavern.
Right, okay.
So that you understand, the sales would be limited to your product.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
We make a lot.
Oh, that's great. Okay.
Apple pie shining, fun stuff.
Okay. Anything else that you wanna present to council, and then I'll let council ask questions?
They have questions, we're here to answer.
Okay.
Any council members, Councilman Schipsta?
Chad, I got one question. They scanned this in for us on the first page of your application, and I cannot read the bottom of it. I can see there's some writing there. It says Monday through Sunday until 2:00 a.m., and then there's writing underneath it.
Oh, it probably states what is allowed by Pennsylvania. Yeah, from the state.
Yeah, somebody wrote it in. It says products to go within PLCB guidelines, Monday through Sunday until 2:00 a.m., and then there's, I can only see tops of letters.
Yeah, I see, I see what you're saying, Mr. Schipsta, the scan came in.
Now, one thing that I should add. One thing that I should add for council is, is when council approves a conditional use, if you approve it, you could approve it with conditions. So you can place conditions on the operation of the conditional use that are consistent with the intent of the ordinance, and including public health, safety, and general welfare.
Any other questions from council?
Do you anticipate being open till 2:00 a.m.?
No.
Are there actual hours, though, where you would intend to be open?
I would assume that we were probably looking at closing somewhere around 11:00. Somewhere along those lines.
Okay, yeah, isn't the, the winery rules are stated for that, right? 11 o'clock?
There, I believe that's what the, I mean, our winery closes at 6:00 every day, except for Friday and Saturday. Fridays and Saturdays are open till 9:00.
Yeah, where I work, we have 9:00.
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless we have a special event, which is not very frequent.
Yeah. Surprisingly, it's 9:00 a.m.
Right.
Or 9:00, yeah, 9:00 a.m. in the morning, you can open up, yeah. Yeah, I think the last word is kitchen, but I don't, that's me guessing.
Yeah, so Chad, when you filled out the application, what they're talking about is on the page, bottom of Page 1, their copy of it doesn't have that, that bottom line.
Can I see that?
And I think what it was talking about was something about the kitchen.
It could say, so on the copy that we have, it says that... The last word's definitely kitchen. I think it's probably stated that it's a full-service kitchen.
I think that's what the original said, but...
Yes.
Any other questions, council?
Chad, do you plan on doing anything yourself there? There were two applicants on the form, and I think that's where there's a little bit of a misunderstanding with the solicitor, you know, and some council members, both of you were on the form. Are you looking at something in addition to the winery in the future?
Yeah, so at some point, this whole process will, you know, evolve, and I don't think that these guys are gonna be looking at operating the food part of it. So at some point, we will kinda end up being together, being able to, you know, make the whole process work.
Okay.
You still have the kitchen, still?
No.
No, okay.
Yep, yeah, we got rid of that, and, you know, we'll build something way updated.
I'm sure.
Just curious, is that for in the basement?
So, right now, we actually have, we have two ideas going. We have, you know, building something in the basement, then we also have adding something upstairs. So, we're gonna...
You have a nice setup there right now.
Yeah, so we're gonna, yeah, we'll figure it out as it kinda goes.
Can I come back if we need to for any types of revisions?
Yeah, I think probably if you wanted to change anything, the first thing that you should probably do would be see the borough zoning officer and make sure that whatever you're doing, because if you change things, you'll probably likely need a zoning permit, and you go to the zoning officer, and he or she will fill you in on what you need to do.
Does that, is that required for that last line, the full-service kitchen?
Yep.
That we just come back?
Which submit plans.
Yeah, right now, we're just gonna put a top system in the cafe. That's where we're starting.
Pleasure. Thank you.
Chad, I would suggest your business is unique already, and successful, but unique. This intrigues me. Are you aware of any other cycle cafes that have entered into this realm?
Oh, absolutely. They're all over the country, they're super popular in Europe. I mean, you go down to, you know, Asheville, North Carolina, you know, there's probably at least three bicycle shops that have the whole cafe, taproom thing. Seattle, Portland, it's a very popular model.
So it is a successful milieu, if you will, yeah.
Yep, yep, very welcome.
Thank you.
Anybody else from council? I actually have a question for our solicitor. Tom, is there, is there any restrictions on music or live entertainment?
No, there's not.
Okay.
We don't have any.
I just wanna make sure that we all know. Anybody else? All right, so that's it for council questions, if you wanna ask for public comments?
Right, so if there, so what we could do is, and maybe, maybe guys, you just wanna stand aside for a moment, is there anyone in the public who wishes to come up and comment or ask questions of the applicants, or comment about the project?
Who can I leave this license with?
Well, just hand it to Mr. Otter, be fine.
Jonathan, can you?
Oh, okay, never mind.
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to approach the podium and be heard on this issue?
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll assume that's a negative response, so at this point, Mr. President, what we would do is, we would turn it back over for council to discuss, and then ultimately to vote.
No, we won't vote until after the hearing.
Okay, if you want...
So we'll close the hearing, and then...
If you wanna close the hearing and then vote during the meeting?
During the regular meeting, yeah.
Okay, you could do that, sure.
I think it's on our agenda, so.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
All right, discussion, council. Any questions? I mean, we asked questions and our concerns. We're just ready to move it to the meeting then, and we'll take action there.
Just one minor clarification. It is an 11:00 p.m.? I was unclear on the hours.
So you'll be able to set those as conditions?
Yes, I mean, if council were, wanted to approve it with a condition that the alcohol service ended 11:00, you could, you would have that, I believe that would be in your power to do, and it sounds to me like that's consistent with what the applicant presently wants to do. If the applicant would, if you would make that a condition, the applicant accepts it but later wants to change it, the applicant can come back and request to have that modified.
Okay, thank you.
With that being said, Tom, with our other craft beverages in the borough, do we have time set for them? Because I do not recall, does anybody recall?
That's a good question, because I don't recall...
Because I don't wanna restrict them if we didn't restrict others, so...
Yes. I do not, I don't know.
I mean, we have Funk's, Yurgie's, and Triple Sun, and then we have the hard cider, too, I switched back.
I can tell you that I don't recall there being a condition on hours in any of those. I think we let them operate pretty much the way they thought.
If I recall correctly, they gave us set hours, but we didn't restrict them.
I think that's true.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Motion to adjourn the hearing? Councilman Andrews, second. Councilman Hart? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? There's seven ayes. Meeting, or hearing adjourned at 7:25. All right. We are back in session with our regular council meeting at 7:25, and at this time, we'll have personal appeals, Part One. So if anyone has a personal appeal, please approach the podium, sign in, state your name and where you're from, and you have five minutes for your appeal. Hearing done. Committee in a minute. Does anyone have anything to bring forward? I'll just say that there were, I think, three council members and myself at the ribbon-cutting for South Mountain Cycle and Cafe, and, boy, what a difference from when it was the VFW and before that, the Alice Clubs. Much more modernized, that's for sure, and it's just, it's gonna be a destination, it's gonna be definitely a destination spot with South Mountain Preserve for biking, and you get the velodrome, and I just wish them the best of luck. This is their second upgrade. They started over by Armetta's, and they moved over on the Triangle, and now they're where they're at now, so anyhow, it was a nice event, ribbon-cutting Saturday morning.
Just Saturday, the library held an event, and it looked like it was well-attended from what I saw.
Summer kickoff.
Yeah, summer kickoff, so congratulations to them on another year, and getting everyone in the community involved. They had food trucks down there, there was also softball tournaments across the street, so it was a very active area in the community on Saturday, so good job.
It was busy. All right. Oh, Councilman McManaman?
Today was the Emaus Main Street Partners Annual Golf Outing, and I'm pleased to inform everyone that the borough team came in second, led by Shane Pepe. So just wanted to give accolades to that.
Second. Second.
Yeah, we won't go into why.
Shane Pepe was ahead. Let's be clear, I was the head cheerleader, okay?
Good job.
Everybody's gotta have a cheerleader. Yeah, yeah, we took second, I know. Well, at least, listen, Nate Brown didn't score ahead of us, and that's all that matters.
And there were many Emaus businesses that were there representing, and that was very nice to see, so.
I just realized we had Flag Day. Was anyone able to attend the Flag Day ceremony? Always not, so, any, no report on that? Oh. Any report on that?
No, it was well-attended, it was a beautiful evening, it was their 50th anniversary, so it was nice, it was a nice event.
And Officer Polster was the keynote.
Yes, he was the guest speaker, and he did an amazing job. Yeah, it was very good.
Thank you for that report. All right, any others? All right, we have a special presentation tonight. I'd like to call Chief Price and Deputy Director Miller front and center, and we'll turn it over to them.
Thank you, Council President, May Berger. To members of council and the public, a couple months ago, I got hit with a triple whammy when three longtime members of the Fire Department decided it was time to retire from active service with the Fire Department, although some of them are still helping with some supporting roles. With that, I would like to acknowledge those three members publicly for their years of service to the department. At this time, I'd like to come forward John Rice, Robert Matrick, and Jeffrey Kooz. I'm gonna start with John Rice, standing right here on my right. John Rice retired as the Assistant Fire Chief. John, in appreciation for your 25 years of leadership, dedication, and service to the Emaus Fire Department from 1994 to 2019, and according to the department records, you had a total number of responses of 3,220. I give you the plaque with your helmet shield. Next is Jeff Kooz. Jeff retired as the Captain of the Fire Police. In recognition of your 39 years of service to the Emaus Fire Department, of outstanding dedication from 1980 to 2019, and your total number of responses during your career with the Emaus Fire Department was 6,429. And Robert Matrick, who retired as the Fire Police Lieutenant, in appreciation for your 12 years of service, of outstanding dedication and service to the Emaus Fire Department from 2007 to 2019, with a total number of responses of 1,393, with your badge of all. With a total number of responses of 1,393 with your badge of honor. We need to picture time.
Yeah, why don't you go in front of the mural since?
So frightened.
So I'm not.
They're trying to hide back here.
No, 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 in front of the desk.
Oh, in front of the desk.
Yeah, in front of the desk, that works.
Keith, why don't you take one end? Perfect.
I just need to cut out the guy on the right here.
Too much forehead glare?
Which one?
Good?
All right, good.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
Thank you for your service.
Mayor's in a lot of photos.
I tried to hide!
All right, one more time. That's a lot of accumulated years of service, 76 years if I did the math right. And three gentlemen there. Thank you very much for your service. All right, we'll move to the reading of the minutes, part of the agenda. Counseling minutes from May 20th, 2019. Does somebody have a motion to approve the minutes? Councilman Hart, second, and by Councilman DeFrain. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? There are seven ayes. Decisions on bids? We have janitorial services. If you remember correctly, we tabled it and we are looking at other options. I believe there's an option on the table right now, but nothing formal yet.
No, we, yeah, we'd like to keep it tabled if, if we could, please.
Okay. Moving on to communications, we have Jason Jasmaine of 915 Chestnut Street. He handed his notice of resignation in for the Recreation and Entertainment Commission. His term is to expire June 7th of 2019, so.
Yeah, and I'd just like to make a comment, 'cause Mr. Jasmaine is standing there at the corner of the door. Jason, thank you for your service to the commission. I know that you guys have been shorthanded for a while and I know life's gotten very busy for you. And, you know, we still look forward for your service to the fire department and the ambulance. So thank you for what you've done.
Thank you, and Patrick, sell us my phone number.
And I, I'd like to thank you also, thank you. We also received a letter from Sarah Plaza from 428 South 7th Street requesting appointment to the Amayus Arts Commission. And also Lindsey Kleinberg, 515 North 2nd Street, also to the Amayus Arts Commission. She would like to be appointed. Were these on the agenda later on or is this gonna be assigned to a commission?
That needs to go to the committee. Which I think.
We already, we have them scheduled for June 20th interviews.
All right, so interviews are scheduled.
Yes.
All right, does anyone else have a communication to bring forward? Hearing none? Borough Engineers Report. Do we have one?
Uh, no, he'll be, he'll be.
Later on.
Yeah.
You'll be busy later. Solicitors Report.
Progress.
Thank you. Unfinished business, part one, we have nothing there. New business, we have ordinance number 1191. An ordinance amending the Borough of Amayus zoning ordinance of 1993 as amended to delete definitions and regulations relating to place of worship and to substitute therefore a new definition and provide regulations identifying permitted accessory uses and further authorizing the use of certain accessories for commercial reasons subject to conditional use approval by Borough Council. This is our first reading with an anticipated second reading of August 19th, which is the third week of, third Monday of August. Would somebody like to place it in the form of a motion? Councilman Schipsta, second. Councilman Anders. All right, questions or discussion? Do you wanna just give, I mean, this is all because of one church, but it's gonna be open to all churches in the borough, correct?
Yes, so, so I guess I'll start and I'll let you finish it off.
That's fine.
So as you're aware, one of our local churches had, had come to us with a concern that, you know, obviously our, our local churches are struggling financially. And some Amayus churches have bigger venues that they can do things that are in addition to their normal church type of service, such as the plays, which was, was St. John's issue. But also renting out basketball courts, which we know is happening, but not regulated. And, and some other things. So what, what we needed to do was we needed to figure out a way to at least give them the opportunity to be considered. Because the way that the zoning laws are written are essentially, there's, there's not even an opportunity for them to be considered. They're very stringent and our zoning hearing board denied an appeal based on, you know, the way that the ordinance is written. So what this does is it allows them to come to council for conditional use approval and, and essentially ask that they have permission to do certain things. Now, one of the things that we did do when we were writing the ordinance, and I would say that Attorney Dinkelacher wrote the language for us based on, on what we, what we were asking. But one, one change from the current zoning ordinance that we have that, that is different and from what committee had approved that's different is the amount of square footage required for the lot. We reduced that from 30,000 square feet to 20,000 square feet. And one of the things, I mean, if you really think about what 30,000 square feet is, there's two churches in the entire borough that fit that bill. One of them barely and the other one, obviously, St. Anne's is much larger than a 30,000 square foot lot. So it, you know, with that 30,000 square feet, it would already rule everybody else out. So we did reduce that down. It's still a very large amount of square footage. And what that does is it, it prevents the, you know, the, the person in half a double running out the church on the side of it and now making that a playhouse too. So it still keeps that, you know, that footprint intact, but it reduces it down to make it feasible so that the other churches that are in the borough would at least have an opportunity to be considered. So essentially, I think that's the 20,000 foot.
Right, that's 20,000.
All right, with that being said, does anybody have any questions?
All right, one, I have one question for Shane. In number four, it states that council may consider the following, and then we have one, two, three, four, five, six. You know, alcohol, kitchen use, solid waste handling. Do we also consider anything about sound?
So you're asking the wrong person?
I am?
Sorry. Attorney Dinkelacher will be able to answer that question for you.
I'll go ask him.
Okay, so just, just to expand on that a little bit, Jeff. What, what we have is, for churches, we have, we, we allow one of the customary accessory uses, which, you know, I think most people understand deal with religious activities and fellowship-type activities and community outreach. But they're generally premised on being non-commercial, maybe not necessarily for, for profit. So when we jump over to four, section four that you're referring to, what we're, what we're doing is now we're saying, if you wanna do things and you wanna do them for profit or in, in a commercial context. So you have, you have a stage and you wanna, you wanna put on productions and sell tickets to the public or, you know, those types of things. You wanna, you wanna serve meals or something. They're gonna come in, people are gonna come in for a conditional use, just like we did tonight with South Mountain Cycle. And, and the factors that are here, items one through six are specific factors. But in addition, you gotta go back to the section we talked about tonight, 27-118, which is that list of very general factors like traffic, safety. You know, the other performance to relate to, 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 yeah, to all, all that stuff. So, so it's, it's gonna be those broad factors. And then items one through six are the specific factors that you're going to be considering what is actually being done. You know, if they're going to do a, if they're gonna do a, a series of, of performances or plays, are they gonna be selling alcohol? You know, and, and base your decisions on those factors.
Okay. All right, that makes sense.
So in other words, we'll be, we'll be debating it on a case-by-case as it's brought forward to us.
Exactly. You will do the same thing that you, that we're doing tonight with Southbound Cycle.
Okay.
Counselor?
Just, just not really a, a question, but a comment. And that's just that the churches are a place in the community. They, they do many different things, whether even holy elections, right? So there's all types of things here that are done within our churches. And there's gatherings that maybe, maybe a dinner, maybe a basketball game. I partake in many of those things and never knew that maybe we needed to have our zoning created that way. So I'm probably guilty of being in some of those locations and unregulated. So it's nice that we are getting it, you know, one definition there and having that open, so.
Anyone else? You ready for the question? It's a roll call vote. Councilman, Councilwoman McManaman?
Aye.
Councilman Schipsta?
Aye.
Councilman Anders?
Aye.
Councilwoman Baumgartner?
Aye.
Councilman DeFrain?
Aye.
Councilman Hart?
Aye.
Councilman Leibnig?
Aye.
There are seven ayes. Second reading, like I said, will be in August then.
Yeah, so because it's a, it's a zoning change, there are several steps we, we take. So that's why it's, it's two months from now. We have to advertise twice, we have to put it in front of planning.
Has to go in front of the Planning Commission, Annoli-Havali Planning Commission.
There's a couple of things we have to do.
Okay.
So that's why it's two months out rather than in July.
Thank you. Unfinished business, part two, we have nothing, items not on the agenda. Does anyone have anything to bring forward? Hearing none? Mayor's Report.
Progress.
Thank you. Committee Reports, Public Works Committee, Chairman Anders.
Nothing for official action this evening. You'll see our notes. Shane, if I may ask about the pool update?
So the pool's up and running. Will be open tomorrow. The, so, so, you know, we, we told you what the costs and stuff were in your, in your committee notes. We came to find out that the starter that we purchased is not, it's obsolete. They told us to buy the wrong starter. So that's why it was $1,780 versus 7,000. We found one for 6,000. That is, it's on, it's new. We had a whole lot of rewiring we had to do and put some transformers in and some other things. But the pump is rebuilt, the guys did a great job getting out. And just so you know, to get that pump out, we had to knock the hole out, like a hole out of the side of the building. And then we put a new door in there and it's 850 pounds for that pump. So it's not, it's not something where you just go and grab your pool pump, like at your house. So, so it's all taken care of. Now it's a matter of the chlorine testing coming back adequately tomorrow morning. Because we had to supercorinate the pool to make sure that there's, you know, acceptable levels of chlorine. And obviously bacteria levels need to be acceptable. Of course, you know, all that stuff, it's gonna rain all week. 'Cause that's how, that's how our world goes around here. But it is up and running.
The other thing I just wanted to note for the public is we are doing many manhole repairs and taking them and replacing them. So if you see a lot of work being done around town, it's because of that project. And beyond that, you can see our notes and I'll report progress.
Thank you. Health Sanitation and Cores Committee, Chairman Schipsta.
Yes. We have the resolution for conditional approval of the Chestnut Ridge at Rodale, so we wanted to start that.
Sure.
Okay.
Who will take charge on that?
So Shane, do you wanna?
So, yeah, I think maybe we'll do two things. We'll invite Attorney Booba up.
Yep.
And whoever he would like to bring with him. And then we'll also turn it over to Attorney Dinkelacher and.
And we all have our floor.
Our esteemed engineer, Mr. Ott, to kind of run us through and make us understand at our level of thinking. Please remember, we are not engineers, we are not attorneys. So as I tell you, explain it to me in sixth grade terms, if you could, please.
So, so I will, I will rely on, on Attorney Booba to provide the specifics, but generally you're, you have before you a, a, a project by Phoebe. And it is for the Rodale property and it involves two plans. One is a lot consolidation plan where they are taking a number of lots and turning them into one lot. And then there's a land development plan in which various buildings and facilities are being constructed. And Joe, I'll let you go into the details. Whatever I, whatever's easiest for you.
That way we saw our engineer can speak into that.
Yeah. We can.
Okay. We can get these drawings when necessary.
I have a loud mouth.
Okay. We can get these drawings up in front of you to answer anything specific. But, good evening, I'm Joe Booba from Fitzpatrick-Lunson. Booba, representing Phoebe. And when I was thinking about tonight, I, I, I realized that although a whole lot of parts of the borough know a whole lot about this project, we really haven't been in front of council that much. So if you bear with me, I'll try to give you a, some idea of the project and how we got here. Phoebe entered into an agreement of sale with Rodale several months ago to acquire the former Rodale campus on South Thames Street. And that transaction was contingent upon Phoebe receiving approval to establish independent living units in the area of the former Rodale campus where the two main offices were. The daycare is staying, that's the third building on, on South Fourth. And an independent living unit or independent living facility is, as the name suggests, residential units designed for the elder population in which the residents can function somewhat independently. An independent living facility is, is different, however, from just a residential apartment because some services typically in this model at a low intensity level are provided by the community. And the, those services, which we can talk about in a bit of time, include dining, exercise, recreation, et cetera. The independent living facility is also part of Phoebe Richland's Continuing Care Retirement Community, a CCRC. The independent living facility serves as the first step in an aging-in-place model. No longer do you just hear things about nursing homes. The aging-in-place model or Continuing Care Retirement Community typically allows independent, independent members of the elder community who need very few services to begin transitioning over time to more intense services like personal care, assisted living, and then potentially even skilled nursing, what we have historically called a nursing home. So this is the first step in that process, to the extent residents would want to continue through that process. But at its inception point, which is where, what the independent living facilities are, these are well-appointed units, which Mary Kay will go over and show you in a few minutes. And they are designed for a somewhat active community. For example, in the beginning, a, a good percentage of residents still have their own automobiles. Phoebe received special exception approval by the zoning hearing board to establish initially what, 78 independent living facility units on the campus. As architectural plans were finalized, that number increased to 120 ILFs and eventually 122 independent living facilities. Again, the zoning hearing board approved those increases. The buildings were never changing, it was just how many units would be within the buildings. So after special exception approval and the closing on the property, Phoebe Richland is now the owner of this property. Phoebe has now advanced the land development stage. And as Mr. Dinkelacher noted, there's really two things that are in front of you tonight. There's a lot consolidation plan, and maybe we can show that, that first. When the park, when this land was bought from Rodale, there were four different. When the park, when this land was bought from Rodale, there were four different parcels on this, on this, on the South Thames Street side of the property. So, the first thing we're doing is getting rid of those lot lines. So, where all the dotted lines in the lot consolidation plan are being eliminated, so now there's one large 32 acre parcel. That does not include the warehouse across the street, this is just the other side where the consolidation is taking place. That's before you tonight and the township engineer has commented on the lot consolidation plan. As you would expect, there's not, there's not many comments on the lot consolidation plan. All we're doing is eliminating lines on the plan. But Phoebe is also in the process of seeking land development approval, approval for the entire project. That project, by the way, is now Chestnut Ridge at Rodale and you may have seen billboards or, or advertisements in, in the newspaper. And that name and the project pays homage to Rodale's longstanding presence in the borough and also encourages a healthy lifestyle in the elder community. And obviously, Rodale was a significant proponent of that, that, that healthy lifestyle. So- Might be a little bit difficult to see, but this, this is South Thames Street going towards the mountain. This was the existing building, the main building of, of the Rodale campus. There was a second building behind it, which was called the bunker. And when we got into architectural design of the bunker, the bunker really wasn't going to work for residential living. So, a new U-shaped building with this kind of view of the South Mountain to create open space has now been designed roughly on the footprint of that second building, the bunker. These two units will form the heart and soul of this elder community. There will be 45 units in the first building, 75 units in the second building, for a total of 122 units.
Forty-seven.
What did I say?
Forty-five, seventy-five.
Forty-seven and seventy-five, yeah. Forty-seven and seventy-five for a total of, of, of 122. So, these buildings, as I said, while they will primarily be residential units, there's a full spectrum of community services, which I, perhaps I can have Mary Kay or if you want to talk those through, we have, we have those sketches there.
So, there are certain amenities that come with living in an independent living community. And again, to have an active lifestyle. This is, this is actually, I'm sure some of you have already seen, this is the conceptual design for the, what will replace the bunker building. So, this is the new four-story U-shaped building, that's what that will conceptually look like.
Can you show the public, please?
Yes.
Can you also show the public, please?
I'm sorry. This is the same picture that I've used in a lot of the advertisements that are in this.
And if, in this, in this picture of South Mountain, and that's, you're looking back towards the building, so.
Yeah, this is the conceptual design plan for what the change of the exterior of the existing office building is going to look like. So, that is the Rodale corporate headquarters. And again, to change it into residential living apartments, we have to add some outdoor space, so we're adding the balconies. Actually, the middle, and because it is a big square currently, in order to get daylight into all of the apartments, the middle of the building will be removed and there'll actually be access from Thames Street right through to the center courtyard, which is where most of the amenities will, will reside.
That cupola that's on top, I'm not sure that's the right word, will be removed now and it will be open sunlight coming down through that corridor.
This is the conceptual design of really what we're looking at, some of the interiors of the apartments are going to look like. There'll be one and two-bedroom apartments and some will have dens, so there's a variety of unit sizes based on the layout, if you put those in those four buildings. And they'll be in, the building will be connected and they'll be connected through a pool that will be a little more for the residents.
Yes, I see.
And in addition, there will be a dining venue for the residents and, and a pub. And activity spaces and a fitness room and it's a place that everybody should want to look.
And the trail.
We have some great plans and designs. But the difference between this independent living community and a lot of the others is that we're really trying hard to incorporate it into the local community. So, that it's not walled off and when you go to live there, you know, you sort of never leave the, the campus, that is not our intention. Our intention is have the residents that reside there to be fully integrated into the EMAIS community itself. So, we want to give them enough amenities to make living there easy and carefree, but not so much that they're, they don't venture out to, to go to the- Craft wine and beer place. So, that's, that's really what I'm-
And they can bike there.
Right, they can bike there. And actually, one of the amenities in the new building is a bike storage area because we're going to encourage obviously people to have an, an active lifestyle. And pets, and we're going to have a dog wash station, a pet wash station, I guess you can technically take your cat there as well.
A pet wash.
Good luck with that.
But anything, you know, we're really trying to tie off of what Rodale, you know, stepped forth within this community and what they, you know, kind of, we're kind of really jumping off of that point for seniors.
And let me mention just three examples of the community aspect. And you'll hear about a, a couple of these tonight. The first is the daycare is still there because intergenerational activity is, is a, a, a great service for the elder community, so we expect that there will be volunteers. We're looking at uses for the warehouse to incorporate creative arts for the community. And the third thing, there'll be many more, but these are just three apropos to tonight's proposal. The third is you will see that as part of the sidewalk waiver, Phoebe has, has realized that the sidewalk on South Thames Street kind of ends abruptly going into town and we will be, Phoebe's proposed as part of the sidewalk waiver to create that connectivity so that people can walk down South Thames Street into town. Just as three examples of the, the community aspect of, of this. So, as you know, there are currently walking trails on the, on the Rodale campus. Those walking trails have never really been codified, it's just that they've been there and people have used them. As part of the proposal, Phoebe is, is, is offering a, an access easement to the borough and indirectly the public through that. So that the public has appropriate codified legal access to those walking trails and we'll show that now because you'll see it's one of the conditions recommended by the Planning So, the, the Planning Commission has, has asked, has asked Phoebe to not only maintain that the current walking trail, but also to enhance the access. And so, maybe Chris, you can show where, where that, where they've asked us to do that.
So, these green lines that are being turned onto the site, that shows the existing gravel walking trail network, which is a little bit over a mile. There were these two points right here along the, we use the dance studio along South Thames Street. We're going to be adding a gravel access to this trail network. And the other point where we'll be enhancing the walkability is along South Thames Street, off the development property. Phoebe also owns these two properties. This is the sales building that Phoebe's been renovating recently. So, there's no sidewalk along this side of the street, so we'll be installing sidewalk that'll connect from this existing sidewalk to the sidewalk in front of the sales building. So, those two portions of walking path and sidewalk were discussed at the Planning Commission meeting. So, we've incorporated that into the latest design that we submitted last week.
And that sales building will be, I guess already is, Mary Kay, correct? It, it, it's already the, the points, point location for someone to come and look at the units. The idea is in a short period of time, an actual replica will be built?
Yes, we're currently constructing a replica apartment within the warehouse so that people will have something to see. Right now, if you go there and you want to, and you're thinking about living there, you have nothing to actually see, you know, from an apartment. We have a lot of virtual things, but nothing to touch and feel and walk through, so you can get a concept of space. So, we are doing a kind of a faux apartment, so to speak, within the warehouse so people can actually walk through and experience what an apartment would look like there.
So, so with that, typically when you're at land development, you need to talk a lot about the engineering comments, but we've spent a significant amount of time at, at Planning Commission and there really are no remaining engineering comments. I don't want to put words in Mr. Ott's mouth, hold, hold, raise any issue. But frankly, because we've worked those out and Planning Commission has said we wanted a, a relatively clean plan when it got here, there's really nothing for me to comment on. We'll answer any of those questions. I will simply note that the Planning Commission has given unanimous approval to the lot consolidation plan and unanimous approval to the land development plan, subject to your final vote tonight. So, with that said, we can answer questions, we can address anything you like.
So, Mr. Ott and Mr. Booba, one thing that comes to the top of every discussion anymore is stormwater. And I know that we, we had a lot of discussion at the planning level about stormwater and your stormwater plan and whether or not we had concerns about it. Can you just take counsel a little bit through, and again, at the sixth grade level that I understand, about your stormwater plans?
Chris, why don't you just give us the overview and I'll explain what some of my concerns were and how Chris has resolved them.
So, the existing, the, this has detention-
Can you, can you please come to the microphone? Thank you.
Chris Williams, Barry Isit and Associates. I prepared the land development plans that are before you. The existing Rodale campus has two detention basins that control the release of stormwater into the borough storm sewer in South Thames Street. We are reducing the amount of impervious cover on the site, so basically those two stormwater detention basins will be able to function as they were originally designed and we don't need to make any modifications to them.